I think I was able to meet most of you when you walked in. My name is Kathy Capriola and I am very honored to be your city manager. Been here a little over a year. I'd like to introduce Rebecca Barr, who is our city clerk. A number of you know her from going through the whole appointment and application process. And then John Abachi is one of our assistant city attorneys. So we contract with a law firm called Walter &amp; Pastol that are located conveniently here in Sonoma. And John is one of the attorneys and is going to be talking through some of the legal aspects today. Okay? So, let's go ahead and kind of launch in. And we did ask everyone to have name tags and we're going to stand up and sit down. But if someone, if we go through, we'll take a break in a little bit if you want to get some coffee or cookies, get a little energy too, because some of those wallets riveting can be a little dry. So I just want to be honest about that.
Anything else? Just cook a housekeeping things. Restrooms are just out in the lobby. And, other than that, feel free. One thing, if, before we get started, if you have not turned in your Form 700, you are now late. So come see me if you, if it's your assuming office. If you were already on the commission or committee, then you're fine. You have an annual filing. But for those of you who have not, I also have not gotten ethics, proof of ethics training from some of you, and I haven't gotten some of your oaths of office, you haven't come to see me for your oaths of office. So before your first meeting, I would really appreciate if you would, you have to have your oath before your first meeting especially, so.
So as we talk through tonight, you'll understand why, what some of those things are and the why. Okay? All right. So let's go ahead and start. We're going to stand and we'll sit a little bit and we'll kind of move forward. So each have a packet, and this is your takeaway as well. So really what we're going to do is we're going to give you a little kind of city overview. Some of you are well-versed in the city, some of you may not be. And I just want to give you a little context, because while every city is similar, every city is also different. And this is my fifth city that I've had the opportunity to work with, and so just a little bit of context with you. We'll talk about kind of the commissions committees' general roles and responsibilities. We'll also talk about some of the legal obligations. So that being kind of the, some meeting fundamentals and how to control a meeting and how to work collaboratively, because you really, each of you are on a team as we move, as you are on a commission. And then the Brown Act and Public Records Act and some of those things. Okay? So I'm going to ask Rebecca, because I can't talk and click, well maybe I can, but maybe not. Nope, because I can't see that far. All right. So that's kind of the agenda and purpose. So moving to the next slide. Yeah, the slide this way. All right. So again, we're going to, there are, we're going to talk about Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Some of you may have heard, and John, what's the term? There's another.
Roberts.
Roberts, thank you. So Roberts Rules of Order is a very kind of formal way that a lot of organizations run. It is a little complicated though for commissions and some councils. And so Dave Rosenberg was actually Mayor in Davis when I worked, I actually worked with him. And he was a judge and attorney, so he wrote these Rosenberg's Rule of Order, and a lot of cities have adopted them as a little more simplistic way to still run a meeting effectively. So we'll talk about that, Ralph and the Brown Act, very important transparency and a lot of regulations in terms of how we have to do the city's business for all the right reasons. And then Public Records Act, which has frankly gotten more complicated and something you need to be aware of and does affect you. And then also the Political Reform Act. So these are some of the items we'll give you an overview on. Okay? So moving to the next slide. So in terms of commissions and committees, each of you, we really are very appreciative that you have volunteered to help your community. It is, it's definitely a lot of work, it's a lot of time, but it's also, you get to have an impact and you get to help shape your community, and that's very exciting. And you each have different knowledge and expertise, which is why you applied for the commissions that you applied for. So we'll talk a little bit, each of the commissions are a little different though. Some of you have, for example, the Planning Commission actually has more, the most authority, and we've actually already done a training for them separately because it is kind of a unique animal. But we want to make sure that you understand within each of your commissions as well. So, you know, in the room with you, your compatriots, here obviously are the Community Services Environment Commission. And this commission really advises council on both parks, recreation facilities, open space and environment, and also has been very involved in special events historically. Yes?
Can we have the members of the commission stand up as we get to you, so people that are on the commission with you can see who you are?
That would be great. Thank, great idea. So, these are the members of the CSCC. We have some returning members and some new members, so thank you so much. And I think you, and you all will be having your first meeting here shortly, as a, with a reconstituted commission. Design Review and Historic Preservation. Great. All right. I think we're missing a few folks there. And then Cultural and Fine Arts Commission. Excellent. Thank you so much for being here. And Traffic Safety Committee. Okay. And I should say, traffic, thank you very much. So Traffic Safety reviews complaints submitted by the public about different traffic. The Cultural and Fine Arts works on a variety of different programs and recognition for artists in our community. Also worked on our temporary art exhibit done last year in partnership with the museum. And then Design Review and Historic Preservation reviews kind of the look and feel of some of our development projects, in addition to reviewing historical preservation issues that are based on our development guidelines. Next slide. Next slide. Okay. So just a little context, City of Sonoma is one of 482 cities in the state. So we are in good company. And I think one thing that's a little unique is, especially in the valley, so I've lived in town for eight years, but in the valley, we're only two miles by two miles, right? The rest of the valley is unincorporated. But as a city, and there's only 11,000 residents, there's 45,000 residents in the valley, including the city. And yet we are the hub, and the public looks to the city broader. We actually, on our commissions, have non-residents, folks that live in unincorporated areas that are on our commission. That is an optional item for the council to consider. I've never seen that in any other city I've worked for. But I think that speaks to kind of the uniqueness of the city of Sonoma and the Sonoma Valley and how we are. But part of our role as cities to provide services, and we also regulate conduct in a, in a variety of ways. And there's a variety of regulations that we implement. Next slide. This is your city council. Most of you are well-versed, you know them very well. We actually had a conversation with council earlier this week, because in addition to kind of last year, there was a lot of time and attention the council focused on, on how to do commission appointments. I think I just lost this. So we had a conversation with council on Monday in a little study session about, okay, now let's talk about what are some of the best practices for your commissions. One best practice is to do in training like this, at least once a year, if not twice a year. Make sure your commission members are grounded and they know the rules. You can help them be successful until, in order to help the council and city be successful. We also talked about creation of a commission handbook. Some of the commissions have had handbooks, some have not. Basically, a lot of information you're seeing now being put together in a little more of a booklet, a reference guide, to help. And so Rebecca is working on that. It's not quite ready, but that will kind of also be something that will come out and hopefully assist you moving forward and something that we can build on. Right now, some of the commission policies are done by separate resolution, but they're kind of not all in one place. The other item we talked to council about, and there was enthusiasm for, is to have each of the commissions develop a work plan. And that will help, and part of that then is to, that work plan would be presented to the council, and council would kind of review that and say, yes, we agree, or I think this, we'd also like to have you do this, or this idea you have, we think is a great idea, but we think we should wait, you know, next year to do that. Part of this is, and we'll talk about this in a moment, is just kind of the overall num, the overall priorities of the city, the, and the kind of the staff resources that we have in order to do things. And let's just make sure, because each of you are advisory to the council, and if there's things they want you to be working on, that would be good to know so that everyone's kind of being productive and moving forward. Yes, Fred?
If the council approves the work plan, will that be on the basis of a three, three votes? Will it approve it?
Just like anything the council does, it's a majority, yeah. So we take, it's not unanimous. I follow the direction of the majority of the council. So, and we talked about whether that work plan gets presented as part of a joint meeting, or maybe it's at a council meeting, but we're inviting the commission to come and the chair is presenting it, so you all can hear directly, part of the dialogue. Those pieces are still working out. But part of this is how to increase some communication between the commissions and the council, because that's something we've heard of concern. Also, another best practice a lot of cities do is commissions do some kind of an annual report. You know, here's what we accomplished, here's what we worked on. One, it's great, because if someone wants to join the commission in the future, what does the commission do? What have you worked on? What are your accomplishments? And that would be something that would be put on the website. That annual report would also go to the council, and staff would obviously be assisting with putting that together. Another item, the council definitely wants to make sure that we start to program some annual recognition and some appreciation. So that is something also that we'll be doing some, you know, a little more fun way to get together, say thank you, and do some relationship building. So those are some of the things that we talked to council about and they want us to be doing that are a little different than what's occurred here in the past, and we'll be kind of putting some of that together and then rolling it out. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. So at a very, at a high level, there are two forms of local government in the state of California and frankly, in the United States. One is called a council form of government, and one is called a mayoral form of government. So for example, San Francisco is a mayoral form of government. The mayor is elected, and the mayor is not only the ceremonial head, but the mayor is also the CEO. They hire, the mayor can hire and fire department heads, so that's called a mayoral form of government. That's how most cities were run in the early 1900s. And then frankly, there was a lot of political patronage, some, you know, things that I think folks felt were not necessarily above board in the early 1900s, since the city manager form of government was created with the goal of creating that kind of professional layer between the politicians and the organization. And so the city manager and the form, and that is our form of government here, it's called a council manager form of government. So here, the public elects a city council, the council sets policy, budget, and priorities, and they basically determine what will the city do, and then they hire a city manager, in this case, me, to run the organization and provide the direction. Now the way, a private sector model, I'm the CEO, the council's a board of directors. Okay? That's sometimes an easier way for folks to think about it. So I, again, there's conversations with council, but I am figuring out the how and the process, and looking, working with staff on the how. And then being part of that is there, you know, as we work on many priorities and we do have some limitations, and then talking to council about setting priorities. Next slide. So the role of mayor, good question, thank you. The role of the mayor is basically a ceremonial head, and they run, they're the parliamentarian, and they run the meeting. But the mayor has no more vote, no more authority than any other council member. So when they're up here, the mayor's running the meeting, but that person's vote's the same as anyone else. Now I do work with the mayor, review the agenda, and have that, it's kind of a, there's that point person lead, and then they are the ceremonial head, very visible in the community, going out representing the city. But in terms of a, on a vote basis, they don't have any more legal authority than any other council member. They, that's right. They also do sign documents as the mayor, again, representing the city. All right. So every, this is a place that every city is a little different. Not every city has the same services. Some of you are well-versed in this. But with here, with, in our city, in-house, meaning with employees, we provide planning, building, finance and administrative services, street systems and infrastructure, water system and infrastructure, parks and facility maintenance, and cemeteries. So for example, this is the first city I've worked for that has cemeteries. That is a rather unique part of a city portfolio. It does happen. And for, on the flip side, in terms of where we contract for services, we contract for police, fire, code enforcement, community events, recreation, community services, we basically contract out with nonprofits. This is the first city I've worked for that we don't have an in-house recreation department and economic development, which we contract with a chamber to provide some of those economic development services. So again, cities are similar, but they're different, and this is one of the places that were a little different. This is an organization chart, it's hard to see. I just, the main piece I wanted to kind of communicate to you on this is, you know, while we're a city of 11,000, we have 35, 34 full-time employees. So that's it, because we contract police, we contract fire. And then in terms of management staff, there's 11. So I think one thing I just want you to keep in context, you all each have great ideas, and there's things you want to do. And there's things we want to do as staff. We're in this business because we want to make communities better. That's why we're here. However, we are a city with some limited, just staffing resources and financial resources. So we have to work and think about where can we make the best impact, and what makes sense to do strategically, and kind of how, what should we be doing first? And that's part of the reason of having the work plans. Because I think even though a lot of, as I've talked with commissions and I've worked with commissions a long time, commission members have great new ideas and initiatives they want to do. But meanwhile, within the organization, those 34 employees are not only doing new initiatives, but we're keeping the current operation going, kind of current business. And there's a chunk of staff time that just goes to keep the current business running, whether it's processing building permits, or putting planning applications through, or maintaining the streets. So each new project, whether it's increased bike parking, or do a new art project, all great things that we want to do as well, there's only, you know, there's only so much capacity. So sometimes we may need to go get a consultant, or find some contract staff, again, but then that is talking financial resources. So the message I want to convey to you is not, no, we can't and we don't want to, it's a balancing act. And I think that's part of what the work plans hopefully will help with some of that. But that is, there just are some realities with being a small city and what our resources are at this point. Okay? So commission roles and responsibilities. I'm going to go pretty quickly through this, some of this, you're bright people, you can read on your own, and I don't want to kind of get into too much detail, but overall, your roles, commissions, part of what you do is you're an ear for the council, and that's a very important role. You are also a forum to encourage city participation early in the process. You help vet things. So hopefully by the time it comes to council on a policy or a project, it's, there's issues that have been worked out. Maybe there's compromises that have been reached, or there's bigger questions that have been raised the staff needs to go work on. That vetting is an important part. And also getting citizens involved in the, on the front end is also super important. Commissions also look at, sometimes at a much greater depth on issues than maybe council does. And that's also appropriate. That's part of what you're doing, you're getting into the weeds for them on some levels. You're also looking at broad perspectives, and again, you're giving advice to the council. What you don't do is, you don't make policy. That's council's job. And you're not directing budget decisions, you're not directing operations, and you're not directing staff. So that's just some of those parameters. Now, the next slide talks a little bit, and Jeff, you may, I mean Johnny may want to jump in here, but there's really two commission functions. One is advisory, and one is what they, one is what they call quasi-judicial. And I'm going to ask John to kind of chat that, about that.
So probably most of the work that you'll be doing will be in the advisory category, that the commission has the authority under the municipal code to advise on policies and programs to the city council. I believe, I believe that the advice though goes through staff, and then on to the city council. The quasi-judicial role is a little bit different. You'll see in some provisions of the municipal code that there will be, for instance, design review approval. If an application is made, let's say for, you know, in addition to, to a residence, for instance, and there is the requirement for design review, then there is a process that's laid out in the municipal code. And that applicant is entitled to have rights under that process. And so it is the design review in that case, it is the commission's role and responsibility to provide a hearing. And that hearing gives that applicant their, their rights, it gives rights to the public, and it satisfies what's called judicial process under the law, which is, comes from the old concept that no one may, may be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process under the Constitution. And so that has been incorporated into various different applications, like land use applications, for instance, by the state courts and by the state legislature. And so it is written into the municipal code that the commission will have that role. And so that is a role to ensure that the applicant will, will have their rights. An advisory function really is a function just to advise, give, after, you know, study is done, after discussion is done, to advise the council how, you know, the commission believes the council should, should act, what the council should do, and give the council recommendations. And of course, those are non-binding upon the council, which means it would be up to the council as to whether or not to take that advice and those recommendations.
Okay. Thank you. Next slide. So one of the transitions that I've seen commissioners go through as I've worked in a number of cities is, there's a transition that occurs where you might come in as a community activist, whether you're impassioned about the arts or impassioned about the environment, and that's all good. I mean, we want that kind of energy and passion. And, but when you shift and you become a commissioner, you are now representing the city. And you are an official representative of the city, and you're part of a body. So part of that is, from time to time, it's not that you don't still advocate, but time to time you have to take that advocacy hat off and kind of look at, okay, what is the broader good here? Are there other things I need to be looking at? What is the rest of the commission thinking? How can I collaborate and kind of look at maybe a little bigger lens than you would if you were just advocating as an activist, if that makes sense? So there's a little bit of a transition that occurs. Again, I'm not saying don't advocate for what you care about, but there is a little bit of a kind of a shift that occurs as you start to kind of sit in that official advisory body to the council. The next few slides, I'm going to go through pretty quickly, but basically you have some responsibility to four groups of folks. You have responsibility to the city council, to the community, to each other, and to staff. Okay? So in terms of to council, part of this is, you know, once, if council gives you some direction, or they say, you know, please go do X, then you're working consistent with that council direction. Or if council sets some policy within the commission handbook, that's also some parameters that you would have. There may be a time where you need to speak for yourself instead of the commission, not kind of taking your commissioner hat off. If you're going to do that, and we'll talk a little more about that, you may want to be a little careful doing that, especially if you are on design review and you're in a quasi-judicial, because there can be some ethical issues and some FPPC, Fair Political Practices Commission, we don't want you to get in trouble. So this is an area that, if you feel really strongly that I need to speak as an individual because the commission said X, and I think it should have been Y, you can still come and speak to council about the why, but you may need to be careful depending on what hat you're wearing, what commission you're on. So just a point, if you ever get to that point, check in with staff, and we can help guide you through that. In terms of responsibilities to the community, obviously listening, making folks feel comfortable, it is nerve-wracking to come to this podium. Some of you have done it. It's hard. And our goal is to make sure that public feels comfortable coming forward and speaking to the council or commission. We want the space to be safe. We want folks to have a civil discourse. You know, I mean, not a surprise in this town and in every community I've worked with, people feel passionate about their town. And sometimes that passion is here and here. Doesn't, and there may be, there's not necessarily right or wrong, there's different views and different lenses. But we want everyone to be comfortable coming forward. So you'll see the mayor, and this is a unique Sonoma piece, we don't clap at council meetings, and most council members, most council chambers, there's no clapping, there's no booing. Now here, people raise their hands, and they go like this if they agree. In other places, other chambers, people will stand, that's their norm. But again, you don't want clapping or booing, because pretty soon someone doesn't feel comfortable, because if there's a lot of clapping and they feel opposite, they're not comfortable coming up and speaking. And your role as commission is to be able to hear all perspectives and take that into consideration. So this is really important, I think, for chairs and vice chairs. You know, maintaining comfortable space in the chambers is your responsibility, and it's important. Yes?
Over the, over a period of time, during council meetings, there's a three-minute rule that's been questioned. And not, I haven't personally questioned it, but I often wondered whether that doesn't add to the anxiety of people trying to make a presentation in three minutes. If there's an alternative available to people, I think that should maybe be pointed out, even if it's obvious. Oh, you can email individual council members or whatever, but a three-minute meeting is kind of arbitrarily short, although the last council meeting, I can understand why it does make sense because it's all long.
Right. So everyone hear Armando's question? Yeah, so I will tell you, most cities, it is a three-minute rule at a council meeting. But as a chair, if you've got two people attending your commission meeting and you want to give them a little more time, that is a prerogative of the chair and the commission. Okay? But you also want to make sure that you're being fair, and you're not giving one person seven minutes and someone else three minutes. So part of it is equity, but I completely agree with you, Armando. Three minutes, you actually can say quite a bit in three minutes. But emails and sending, you can always have your prepared remarks, and they can bring copies, and they can be handed to everyone on the dais, or emailing your comments ahead of time, and then those are part of the public record. So there's many ways in today's world to communicate. You know, the world of public comment is a traditional way that cities receive comment, and it's a fine way, but frankly, it's not the only way, and it's not necessarily sometimes the best way, which is sometimes why we do different kinds of town halls or different ways to gain input, because not everyone's comfortable coming up and speaking from the dais for three minutes either, so. So there's a little bit of, you know, there's a little bit of flexibility in that, but it's also, you also want to make sure that you're just continuing to be fair and kind of control the space. Does that make sense to folks? I think one other piece I want to make on this is a last bullet here of responsibility of community. You may, you are now a commissioner. So you may think you're speaking personally as your own opinion, but the reality is someone may be hearing you as a commissioner. So, and especially in a small town like this, you just have to realize that people may be hearing you, and they're hearing you as a commissioner versus an individual, and just something to be cognizant about. Responsibilities to each other, be prepared. Some of you will have large packets. Stay focused, let others speak, really seek to understand. Ask your fellow folks up on the dais, okay, I'm not understanding where you're, where you're going, or could you, could you try to clarify that point? Really seek to understand. And then with city staff, you know, what we ask is that, really to use staff as a resource. If you've got questions, contact staff ahead of time so that we can be prepared. Our goal is to make sure that the commissions have the information they need to make what we call informed decisions. That's what we want. We want you to make informed decisions. But we can't do that if we get kind of a last-minute question that we couldn't research and then we're not able to give you the information. I think also, again, we talked a little bit about staff capacity. Again, you're not giving staff direction, you can ask for, you can ask for input and that type of thing. Treat staff with respect and courtesy as you do your fellow commissioners. And then part of the role of the staff liaison, some cities call it a commission secretary. I don't consider the role our staff is playing as a secretary. They are taking minutes, they're helping on the agenda, but their role is a liaison. It is, it's different than that. So they're, they are, they manage the agenda, so they are confirming that things are on the agenda or within a jurisdictional commission, they're looking at flows, or reviewing requests. They are making professional recommendations, and they're doing professional work for you. This is our job. This is what we do, eight, 10, 12 hours a day. Is this kind of, and some of your staff have worked 25, 30 years, so they have experience to hopefully help guide you. Doesn't mean we're always going to get it right, it doesn't mean we're perfect, but hopefully professional, but you know, we definitely want to give you professional recommendations and information. Once there's a work plan, we'll help manage those work plans, provide technical advice, and staff will also monitor the Brown Act. Part of the reason staff is here in the room, the staff liaisons, is to get the same grounding you're all getting. And if there's an issue where a commissioner says, I want to do X, and I'd like to have a conversation about this, and it's not on the agenda, the role of staff is to say, thank you Commissioner Jones, but that's not agendized, and it would be against the Brown Act for us to, to do that. And it's not just the responsibility of staff then to hold us all accountable, the rest of the commission needs to say, yep. The rest of the commission needs to say, yep, no, we really shouldn't have this conversation now. Because if you end up having a Brown Act violation, and John will talk more about this, then the action doesn't hold. You either have to have a do-over, and sometimes you get a cease and desist order, the city can get sued, it's embarrassing, we just don't want to go there. We want to do good professional work. So, but it is staff's role, because, you know, we're going to give you an orientation, but it's complicated stuff, right? So it is staff's role to help, so we, hopefully we don't collectively trip. Yeah, let's do that. So staff members, if you would stand, that would be great. So let's start. Colleen, do you want to introduce your team and your commission folks?
I'm Colleen Ferguson, Public Works Director, City Engineer. I just started in July, so a lot of you know a lot more about the city than I do. I'm learning every day. Trent Hudson is here, and he serves as Staff Liaison for the Traffic Safety Committee, which hasn't been fully established yet, but it will be soon. And then the person, and Trent, in terms of, the person who's not here is Catherine Wall. She's on vacation this week, she'll look forward to seeing the video. And she is the Staff Liaison for the CSCC. Do you want to say anything about?
Yeah, Trent Hudson, again, Public Works Operations Manager, and he's in the Traffic Committee. I look forward to it.
And then up front is the other Colleen. Colleen Pratt is the Staff Liaison for the Traffic Safety Committee. Say whatever you want to say, Colleen.
Well, we took it on, I think, we're on our second year. And it was kind of just like dropping our lot from the police department. So I'm really glad that we're having this training, because I feel like I'm not familiar with the Brown Act and all that, so I'm looking forward to getting better trained and doing my job. You know? And we don't have regular meetings, I love. We need to do a five-week session. We got a good few regular meetings, but the first year I took almost like three. Yeah.
Wendy?
Oh, and I'm Wendy Atkins. I'm the lead staff person for the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission, and I also support the Planning Commission.
You all know me, but I'm actually the staff liaison to the Cultural and Fine Arts Commission.
Great, thank you so much. Great suggestion. So the other, the next slide really speaks to, I'm sorry, one other thing that the chair, that the staff liaison does is work with the chair to kind of coordinate the agenda and plan and kind of review the agenda. Yes, Matt?
I wanted to, wondering, I'm confused about how to use the staff as a resource and ask questions of staff without giving them direction. Could we email staff before the meeting and ask them to answer a question, provide guidance at the meeting? I just know from my experience that there's times when if I, you know, two minutes of input from staff would save 10 minutes of wasted time.
So you can always call the staff liaison and ask a question. I think one thing as staff that we really want to make sure is, we want to make sure that if, that we're treating all the commissioners fairly, and that they're all kind of getting the same information. So if a commissioner does call on something and ask A, B, and C, staff may at the meeting say, you know, I got this call, and here's the information. You know, in other agencies I work for, an email would go out, and it would go out to everyone, and, but those are much larger agencies, we just don't have that capacity to kind of do that. But yeah, you can ask a question, you can also say, it would be helpful to know this, that's fine. But again, you're asking questions, you're not saying, staff, I need you to go do this research. That's directing staff. You can say, it would be helpful to understand that. Staff can then decide, do we have capacity? Do we think that's a piece that really needs to be done? Or is that really maybe one commissioner's vision that may not serve the rest of the commission? And again, that's part of the trade-off. We want to review individually, but just like council, we work for the, kind of the majority and not the individual council member. Same thing here, we're working for the commission as a whole, not just an individual commissioner. Does that make any sense to folks? Okay. All right. Well, it's a good thing we have paper. We'll figure out if we can get it back on. Okay. So meetings and attendance, so staff will be keeping track if you're able to come to meetings. Obviously, a number of you are working, you may be traveling, et cetera, you may not be able to make every meeting, we get that. But we also need commissioners to make a commitment and to do this, because it's important. And so our municipal code basically says, if you miss three consecutive meetings or a third of a calendar year, you are automatically eliminated. So it's not a matter of being excused or not excused, you miss three in a row or a third of the meetings, and it's kind of done. So if you do have something coming up, or you've, you know, you've got something that's occurred, reach out to your staff liaison, they can have a conversation with the clerk. Maybe you need to step down for six months, the alternate steps up, and then you step back. But that is a way to strategically manage it versus just basically being eliminated and being forced to step off. So, okay?
For some reason, you're not able to get ahold of your staff?
And that, if you're not able for some reason to get ahold of your staff liaison, you can always contact me, and I can get that information to them, but you still let someone know that you're not going to be there, and we can connect that way. But I suggest you start with them.
Why don't you finish that, so disclosure next?
So financial disclosure, these are those Form 700s that we're talking about. The Political Reform Act is what governs the campaign finance, the, sorry, I'm like, just wasn't, wasn't looking at this today. They cover campaign finance, they cover conflict, bias. You're not government code filers, some of you are, some of you are not, but you have been identified in the city's Conflict of Interest Code that you're going to have this disclosure. So basically, what that is, is you have a certain category that you have to file under, and it is your, it could be real estate, it could be salary, and I know all of you have just gone through this process, so you're fully familiar with it. That being said, it does, it is something that we're required to do. If somebody isn't filing or doesn't file, it is a requirement as your filing officer that I do have to indeed turn you over to the Political, the Fair Political Practices Commission, and then they will deal with you directly. So just keep in touch with me on those things, and if anything, as you're filling out those forms, if you have, do you have a question?
Well, not all of us have to do that.
No, the Cultural and Fine Arts Commission are not part of that, correct. Yeah, if you are, you've been contacted by me directly, and most of you have them, and there are a few that will, I'll be looking for you. So if you have, again, when you have a question, if you have something come up on your commission that you think you might have a conflict, or, you know, that might be something, you can always contact FPPC directly. You can call me, but I'm going to give you their phone number. I'm not an attorney, and I can't advise you on that. If it's something in particular with the form, then I can help you, but otherwise, I'll have you contact them.
Yeah, so, I mean, Rebecca's a great resource, but as she says, start with your staff liaison, and then we can, we'll go to her if we need expertise. Yes, Armando?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Or one-third, if you only meet three times a year, this one meeting.
You know, so that's a really interesting question. We'll have to think about that one. We'll have to think about that one, because that is much more unique than commissions who meet, you know, monthly. So appreciate bringing that to attention. We may, part of what we're looking at, I mean, we've done a lot of cleanup in the Muni Code, and we've created a whole administrative policy for council, and maybe some other things we still need to kind of clarify, clean up. So thank you, that's a good one for us to kind of.
And one other thing, mostly experiences traffic safety, and mostly we meet essentially as needed. We kind of have a irregular schedule of meetings and so forth. So in terms of, I think we've lost a long period of time in this meeting, because, but you know, essentially, if I'm notified by email, I probably get back and say, or I try to let someone know I'm here. So is that generally the case in terms of?
So I think, I think traffic, I think keeping informed of staff is what you should do. What we may need to do is, is just clarify, we'll have to pull the Muni Code up, and we may need to clarify that, you know, accept traffic safety or put some different, you know, because that commission committee doesn't meet as regularly, so it's a little different. So we may need to clarify it. So at this point, basically inform staff if you're going to be gone, and this doesn't happen a lot. Most folks, again, are, you know, you sign up because you want to participate, but sometimes work or a family medical issue or something does impact, so. Good question though, Armando, appreciate that info.
We actually do have to do some cleanup specifically to the Traffic Safety Committee, because when we did this last ordinance.
We do have to do some cleanup already in the Traffic Safety Committee part of the municipal code, because when we did this most recent update with the council appointment policy and the ordinances cleaning that policy, you know, making those changes, the Traffic Safety Committee was not included. So we've already identified that that does have to definitely be done.
Okay. So what we're going to do next is, I'd like to have John Abachi go through the next section, Meeting Management, and then we're going to take about a five-minute break, let you stretch, come get some coffee before we talk about the Brown Act, okay? All right, but we're moving, moving forward here. Thank you so much for your attention, and appreciate the questions. So John?
Okay, first of all, I apologize losing the screen, but thank you to Rebecca who brought it back. Well, thank you all for your service, behalf of myself and the city attorney's office, and for being here this evening, we appreciate it. So for meeting fundamentals, the first slide essentially lays out the order of the proceedings of a meeting. You've been appointed to a commission, and now a commission is going to meet. And so now there has to be a process, there has to be a procedure in place for how that meeting is going to be conducted. So the first step is, once you get into the meeting, and as Kathy was mentioning, this comes from Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which you'll get a copy of with your packet, and is a much simpler form of rules than Robert's Rules of Order, and is made for city commissions such as these, in order for the process to go as smoothly as it can, and still achieve all of the objectives that is sought to be achieved by having a commission and the public give input to that commission, and have a process and a meeting on certain matters that are within the authority of that commission. So the first step is, let's say there is an item that is on the agenda, which is a subject, which is noticed under the Brown Act, which means that it can now be a subject of discussion, debate, it can be a subject of a report, and can be discussed at the meeting. So the chair announces the agenda item, announces that item, and clearly states the subject so that everyone knows that this is the item that will be discussed at this time. And as the chair is the presiding officer of the meeting, it is the chair that controls the meeting and the chair that makes the announcements. The second step is, the chair then invites the presentation of the staff report. So as you can see, these are, these are rules made for the city. Staff report is a report, usually it will also be in written form, that is made by a staff member that will give an analysis, background of the subject matter that is being discussed, and often will give a recommendation as to what the, what action the commission should take. And that staff report is given orally, in addition to being in writing, is given orally to the commission. And so the commission will then hear from the staff member. And if it is not a staff member that is going to give the report, then it will perhaps be another commissioner who will be giving the report that's on the commission. But that will essentially set the, set the discussion on the item, and then, once the staff report is completed, then the chair, again, the presiding officer, will ask the commissioners if there are any questions of the staff member for clarification. And that is the time when the commissioners will then be able to ask questions of the staff member, maybe there was something that wasn't quite clear from the staff report, or maybe they have questions that weren't directly addressed by the staff report. So that will be the process where each of the commissioners will have their opportunity to ask questions. Notice that all of the discussion at this point has been by the staff member, by the commissioners, not by the public. Once those questions are all asked and they are answered by the staff member, then the chair will open it up to the public. And under the Brown Act, where we're dovetailing a little bit here, but under the Brown Act, every member of the public will have the opportunity to address every item that is on the agenda. So any members of the public who want to come and talk about that item will then have their opportunity to give their comments on that, on that item. And so that the chair will, step four, the chair will invite public comment on the item, and that will be the opportunity for all members of the public to come to the lectern and, and say whatever they wish to say about the item. At that point then, when all the public comment has been taken, the chair then closes public comment, asks for further questions or discussion by the commission, but will often go directly to step six, which is where the chair will invite a motion on the item. And if there is a motion as made by another commissioner on the item, then the chair is to announce the name of the commissioner making the motion. And then the chair is to determine whether there is enough support on this item in order to discuss it. And the way of doing that is by asking if there is a second, if any commissioner would like to second that motion, like to support the motion. If the motion doesn't get a second, there's, there's no reason, it's just a, you know, basically a waste of time for the commission to debate the motion, because the motion is clearly going, going to lose, and it's going to die. And that's why the rules are written that way. After a motion is made, then the chair asks for a second to the motion. Now, if there is a second to the motion, then the chair again announces the name of the commissioner who seconded the motion. And at that point, the chair may repeat the motion so that everybody is clear as to what the motion is, what action the commissioner who made the motion is, is looking for the commission to take, and that the other commissioner who seconded it is supporting. And then the chair will ask the maker of the motion or the secretary to repeat it to make sure that it's clear. Now, it doesn't have to happen in each and every occasion, it may be simpler than that. But the idea is for everyone to be on the same page and know what the motion is, because they're going to have to vote on the motion. Here, it doesn't say this in step eight, but here is usually the time where there will be discussion. The chair will ask for discussion, and there will be discussion about the motion. And there can be another motion made, to maybe to change that motion, to amend it a little bit, to make some changes to it. And then, when through that discussion, that discussion of the motion, that discussion of the, of the item itself, there will then kind of be distilled a kind of understanding, which is all in, in public, as to what the commission, the members of the commission may want to do on this item, as each commissioner will give their comments on the motion, on the item, maybe that they think that the motion should be amended, it should be changed, and in some way, shape, or form, and maybe there's another commissioner who would agree that it should be changed. And then you'll start to see that the question is, which motion, which idea is going to kind of garner a majority? And so the chair will kind of work through the motions, in order to get to a point where a consensus arrives, and there is a motion that gets a majority of the, of the votes. So that's, that's generally how Rosenberg's Rules of Order work. I think it works quite well, a lot of questions, okay? Yes?
I have two quick questions. One is, I'm thinking this is not on here, but personally, we opened public comment not broad, it's not on the agenda. on, not on the agenda, sorry, and that is still customary?
Yes. Yes. Under the Brown Act, any, for any regular meeting, any regularly scheduled meeting of your commission, it is required that there be a, a time for the public to come in and say basically anything they wish to say, within limits. It should be within the subject matter area of the commission. But that public comment is not going to be about the items that are actually on the agenda. So, that could be, normally would be, at the very beginning of the meeting. Although, the chair can reorder the agenda items and can reorder how public comment goes. But if it is at the beginning of the meeting, then that would be the opportunity for any member of the public who may wish to speak about something that's not on the agenda, maybe it's something they'd like to see the commission do, they'd like to see be placed on a future agenda. And then, they can come in and they can speak, and I believe, again, the, the limit is three minutes for each, for each speaker. Yes?
Yes. Were you saying or implying that there's a, if you go from item three, meeting fundamentals, down to item eight, that after item eight, it could come back to item three?
No. So, item three is for the commissioners to specifically ask questions of the staff member, giving the staff report. That's the point in the, in the process where the staff member has given his/her report, probably made a recommendation as to what action the commission should take, and the commissioners then have the opportunity to ask questions of that staff member. But it, the public has not spoken yet, and there's been no deliberation, or, in other words, discussion by the commissioners.
Armando, just, I think, part of John's point that he was making, you could have a motion, you could have a second, and then maybe in part of the conversation, even though you've gotten a second, the motion could fail. And then, really, you're not, and then someone's got to make another motion, you may have to have further discussion. So, sometimes you're going from eight back to six. That does happen sometimes.
Well, that's what I was wondering, because that seems to happen, but I haven't seen it in dialogue.
It does.
Because I've been in meetings where, where a chairperson will say, after the second, there's a further discussion, and, and before it even, you know, before it even gets to a vote.
Yeah. And you can definitely have a discussion, you can have a first and a second, and you can have further conversation at that point. And that's all, it's good to have discussion, it's good to have dialogue. If you jump straight to motion, second, vote, frankly, sometimes you, you, you miss an opportunity to maybe shape the advice, the advice a little more broadly, or shape your recommendation. So, again, you want to be able to have some time to discuss these things with, you know, with the commission. Sometimes, though, you might have a commissioner who just wants to keep discussing, and the rest of the commission is like, we're, okay, we've, we've debated this enough, we're really ready. And then, you can kind of, what they do, what they say, call the question. You can call for the question, which means, I want to, I want to have a motion, I want to have a second, and I want to vote, because we've kind of, we've, we've churned on this for long enough. Does that make sense? Matt?
Yeah. So, sometimes when a, someone, a commissioner and mayor's motion is seconded, there's a discussion, the commissioner who made the motion realizes they need to clarify or make this a different motion. Does that, can you, can a, can a motion be rescinded for clarification?
So, I'll start and ask John to add. You can, you can amend your motion, what's called a friendly amendment. Sometimes, there'll be a discussion, and one of the, one of the commissioners will say, you know, would the maker of the motion make a friendly amendment to add X or Y? And if the motion, if the person made the initial motion, the second is fine, you can add a friendly amendment. If you're going from here to here, then the person who made the motion says, you know, based on the dialogue, I want to, I'm actually going to pull back my motion.
Hold on.
Right. I want to pull back my motion back.
You can make this differently.
Right. So, part of it, you need to have some clarity, right? You're, you're, it's like, it's like a road. You're starting down a road, and if you're going to do a U-turn, you've got to say you're doing a U-turn. If you're going left and add some on, you need to say that. But the public needs to be able to follow, and staff needs to be able to follow. And it gets confusing if the chair isn't being clear. And sometimes, staff, this is our job, staff liaison's job is to help make sure that the road is clear, not only for the, for the individual, everyone up on the commission, but for the public. Let's just be clear, the motion in front is right now, we've had a first and second, there was a friendly amendment, it wasn't accepted, you know, is this, we still have the first, we still have the motion, and the second, is that still where we are? The person who made the motion, are you there? Yes? Or maybe they say at that point, I want to pull it back, and then you're kind of, all right, now we're in a do-over. Let's have a conversation again. Does that make sense? Colleen?
The first part on that public discussion, you know, let's say we have two items, you know, one stop sign, two additional red herring. Well, during the public discussion, somebody's, well, I'd like to see a stop sign on this week, and it's not on our agenda. What do we do with that? Do we just listen, or?
No, basically, because, again, it's, it's your job to say, thank you very much. The process, if someone wants to add a stop sign, there's a form you fill out, staff does research, that is not on the agenda, we're not considering that tonight. So, but part of it is to educate the public on what is the process. But no, it doesn't, we don't, we're not bringing something up and going in left field, we're dealing with only what is in front of us, and that is staff's job to help clarify, and, and again, respectfully teach a member of the public who doesn't know, doesn't know the rules of the road, right? For all the right reasons. But we need to teach them. Yes, Yvonne?
I wanted to clarify, the other thing John said, if a motion doesn't have a second, it dies?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think we've done that. I think we have always taken it all the way, three, or a vote, or rescinded. So, so if a motion is made, no second, it's like it never...
Right. Then, basically, what we, the terminology we use is the motion dies for lack of a second, and there's not enough support to start down, to start down that road. So, you're basically stopped. Think of that. You don't have a sec, you don't have a second, there's a stop sign. So, then you're backing up, and you're saying, okay, where are we going? And then you're asking for another motion. Okay? Yes?
The, calling the question, any of the one associated, you know, motion is second, discussion, majority, and someone wants to keep talking, anyone on the commission can call the question?
Yeah. Yes. And I probably shouldn't have thrown that red herring out there. It is a tool, it is in Robert's Rules, and it is in Rosenberg's Rules. It's a, it's frankly, it is a way to close the conversation down. It is not something I would advise you to do, use, except very rarely. Frankly, it's not necessarily respectful of your colleagues. And...
The chair should run that.
And the chair, really, the chair, and, and it does take a power away from the chair. So, I think you can, you know, sometimes you can say something, you know, Mr. Brown, Commissioner Brown, I hear they're really passionate about this, but I don't hear support from the rest of the commission. So, I think at this point, I understand where you are, but there's not agreement, so, Chair, I'd like us to move forward, can we go back and entertain the motion? It's another way to say it versus I call the question. So, again, these are, part of it, just think about is, these are long-term relationships. You're going to come once a month, or three times a year, with these people and work with them, and you want to, I mean, you may not always agree, but you do want to build relationships and be respectful of each other. And sometimes, calling the question doesn't necessarily do that. So, speaking of calling the question, I'm going to call, I'm going to come back here, and I'm going to call a question on something. Yes, go ahead.
When you talk about when you're opening the public hearing after the staff report, is, I would think it's customary to bring the applicant first? That would be the first person that you would invite with the public hearing? And then, you, then, then after that, you have the other people say da-da-da? So, I've seen some meetings where after, before they close the public hearing, and maybe there's some items that came up during the public comments, that, that people had invited the applicant to come back and answer that? Is that something that is advisable to do? And does the applicant get three more minutes to answer the questions that came from the public comments?
So, I'm going to ask Wendy, so I just want to understand kind of how, what our protocol is, because I've not gone to a design review. So, talk to me about what our protocol is.
Sure. So, there's two, two questions I think you might be asking. Are you talking about reopening the public hearing, or just after?
After, after the public makes their comments about whatever the issues are, would it be customary to have the applicant come back and address those?
Yeah. So, that happens, and it is customary, especially with the Design Review Commission, Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission, that if questions come up, then the applicant can come back up and address the questions, and we typically don't time them.
And also, on this list of order of the meeting, typically after, I'm designing anyway, typically after staff report, we ask the applicant to come to the podium to describe their project.
So, in proper protocol, what you should probably do is you open the public comment, and help me, Rebecca or John, if you disagree, I mean, so similar like with an appeal hearing, you're opening the public comment, because you're now taking it away from the commission, and you're saying, okay, public, the applicant is also the public. So, they come forward, and typically, staff will have given them 10 minutes, 20 minutes, whatever, to make, and told them how much time they're going to have. They then make their presentation. Sometimes, you can, if, if the commission has a few questions, you can ask the applicant right there at that point. Then you go to public comment, and there may be questions that come up from the public, then, that the applicant, you may want, the chair may say, I'd like the applicant to come back and answer, I've got a few questions came from the public, ask, public comment's still open, you're asking them to then answer those questions, and then you're closing public comment, and you're bringing it back to the commission or the council. That's the cleanest way to do it. When it goes to the public, it's the public and the applicant, and you're answering questions, you're taking feedback, but then you're closing it and you're going back up. What you don't want to do is get into this, where you're having a dialogue back and forth, you've closed public comment, a member of the public's saying, but I think you should do this, or the applicant is, what, I'd like to comment on this. If there are things that the applicant, that come up, that you need to ask the applicant again, basically, you need to say, Chair, I'd like to reopen, can you reopen public comments, so we can hear from the applicant? So, it's a little more formal, but that's typically the way the process would work. Colleen?
Just wanted to clarify that that's still under the control of the chair and the commission. So, applicant makes their comments, then the public comments, and then it doesn't break down into a dialogue between applicant and the public commenters, it's the chair and the commissioners asking applicant to respond to whatever they would like a response on.
Does that make sense to folks? Okay. So, I want to be cognizant of time, because I don't want you here at 10 o'clock at night. So, I'm going to, let's kind of flip through quickly the next slides, because I do want to get to the Brown Act, and that's where there's some really chunky stuff. No, just a second. So, the next slide after the meeting fundamentals, the one through eight, so this, this next slide just talks kind of about public comment, some of which we've just kind of talked through. And the next slide, courtesy and decorum. The one thing I want to say to you, this will happen very rarely in a commission meeting, it definitely happens in council meetings at times. You might have a member of the public who is rude, who starts to take over a meeting, who is not hearing from the chair, saying, thank you, Mr. Smith, we've heard from you, please sit down, Mr. Smith keeps popping up, and he just can't. It's, it's not a fun thing to be, to be the chair and have to deal with. Honestly, the best thing at that point is to say, we'd like to recess. So, we're going to take a 10-minute break. You take a break, and then staff can take Mr. Jones aside and have a conversation. Mr. Jones continues to be kind of belligerent and taking over a meeting, and that, again, it's rare, but I've seen this in other agencies. Sometimes, you, on a rare, rare occasion, you have to call police. Sometimes, you just stop the meeting, and it doesn't happen. But that's a real shame, right? Because you all are there to do the people's business, and you've made that time. So, but that is where staff will try to run interference, but it's better sometimes just to take a pause in the meeting, and the chair should always feel comfortable doing that. Okay? That is a tool, and it's a very effective tool. Okay? We've talked about the chair's responsibilities, those are kind of outlined. The chair really, I think one thing that's important is the chair really needs to make sure that while they're the chair, they don't have any more voting power than the rest of you. So, there is, the chair really needs to make sure that they're being fair, and they're being equal, and making sure that everyone gets heard. Oftentimes, too, you'll see in council meetings, the mayor speaks last. The chair should vote last. You are first the parliamentarian, and you're second your individual vote. So, kind of, protocol is, don't use your voice as chair to say, I think we should do X, and frankly, then, you know, you're getting to speak, because you get to allow yourself to speak first, versus waiting and letting the rest of your commission speak, and you give your opinion towards the end. Okay? That's a piece. And it is, you want to be able to kind of make sure that you're keeping control of the meeting. There's, I'm going to just flip through some of these other items. If there's anything else that you guys think we should focus on? There's some conversations here about what does poor teamwork look like? The other thing is side conversations. You all just need to be careful, these microphones, if they're on, they'll pick up side conversations. Okay? So, and there may be conversations you don't want picked up. So, one, you shouldn't be having side conversations very much, because it looks like you're basically figuring out what you're going to do without doing that publicly, and the whole purpose is to have these meetings be public. So, just be careful of the microphones, be careful of side conversations. You know, I think also, just, there's, you know, want to make sure that we're not, we are focusing on the issues, even when you disagree, we're not personalizing things, and we're not attacking folks. That's not part of kind of the Sonoma culture. So, I think some of these other items, I think if you have questions or concerns, or you're frustrated with staff, you come see me. Okay? That's, that would be, it's not, if in the meeting, I ask you not to berate staff, not to embarrass them, that doesn't do any of us any good. But if there are concerns, you either go to the department head, like, you know, with Kat and Colleen, as Colleen Ferguson is the chair, Kat runs the meetings, organizes, but you could go, talk to Colleen first, but there's questions, otherwise, you can always come to me. And that's, because it's my job to understand what's happening and, and how we can make sure that we're all working together. All right. The one other piece I wanted to talk about briefly was on our website, how many folks have been on our new website? Okay. How many folks have seen, there's three pages, I want to make sure you've seen. One, have you seen the key initiatives page? Okay. So, the key initiatives page may not affect what you're doing, but this is a page that frankly lays, it talks about what are the big things the city are doing, water rate study, cannabis, tasting room moratorium, vacation rentals. These are new pages we put together, where you can track where we've been, where we are now, and where we're going. Who's seen the development pages? Anyone? Okay. So, I want to thank, Wendy's done a lot of work on these, as has the planning staff. These are brand-new pages that didn't exist before our new website came out in November. So, you can go on, very in the very front homepage, development pages, and you can see, you can go to all the big development projects, whether it's Cheese Factory, or the West Napa Hotel, they all have their own webpage, they all tell what's, what's, what's occurred, they've got the documents, where we're going, and that is the information that we didn't have before. So, again, I tell you this sometimes, because when you're a commissioner, people are going to ask you about things. You don't have to be that know everything by any stretch, but there's a lot of information on the website that we didn't have three months ago. So, please spend some time to look there. And I think, let's take a five-minute break, let you get a...
So, a lot, a lot of you have now heard about the Brown Act, obviously, and you've probably, many of you have now applied it. So, what it basically means is, it's the open meeting law of the state of California. And kind of, the, the key terms about the Brown Act are a publicly noticed meeting. And the idea is that decision-making go on during a publicly noticed meeting, and, and not go on during a, you know, private sessions that the public is not able to observe, the public's not able to give its input, and the public knows nothing about. So, here we have Ralph M. Brown, who is known for the Brown Act, 1959. We've seen Mr. Brown's picture many, many times. So, as we said, Brown Act is California law, it requires a quorum. So, we're going to get to the next slide in a minute, but what a quorum means is a majority. So, in order for you to have a meeting, you have to have a majority of your body, and that is called a quorum. And you cannot take any action, and you can't take any discussion without having a quorum. It applies to legislative bodies, which include commissions, such as yours, boards, councils, and obviously, it applies the rules for open and public meetings. So, we can go to the next slide.
So, here, so let's say you come to a meeting, and it's a seven-member body, and there's only three of you there. You cannot hold a meeting. As a matter of fact, you can't informally talk about things, you cannot hold a meeting. So you wait 10 or 15 minutes, if the person doesn't show, then the meeting's canceled. That's the way it works. Okay? So sometimes people think, well, we can just talk informally, we just can't make any decisions. No, if you don't have a quorum, you can't hold the meeting. So if you're going to miss a meeting, you need to let the ladies on know because if we don't have a quorum, we have to go and cancel the meeting so that folks aren't showing up and then we'll find the time in the schedule. Okay?
And just quickly on that as well, you can lose your quorum. If you have a meeting, it starts out with four members and someone leaves, you've lost your quorum. The meeting is over. You can't continue. Just because it started with a quorum, it has to be maintained.
Really important.
Do you have these recused from meeting, that's the question?
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming they're not recused from every item on the meeting, but if someone cannot attend, not participate, then you don't have a quorum.
Yeah, so let's say you've got three items in front of you, maybe three design review, three design reviews, three items in front of you. You have the first item, you're fine. Second item, you've got some absences. Someone has to recuse themselves because they live next door. They step out of the dais if you're recused. We'll talk about that there. Off the dais, out of the room. And if you don't have a quorum, then you can't hear that item.
You can use the alternate.
You can use the alternate if you have an alternate. If you don't have an alternate, you still have a quorum, then you are moving to the next slide and you're not going to be scheduled. The quorum is like, do you have gas in your tank or not? Okay, if you don't have enough gas in your tank, you're not getting, you're not starting.
So on this slide, what I really want to emphasize, again, of course, the Brown Act applies to all legislative bodies. And that can include a committee that is created by one of your commissions. And this does get tricky because a lot of times your commission will be meeting and you'll say, you know what? We need to study this. And we would actually like to have more time. We'd like to be able to maybe talk to some other cities, maybe talk to some other staff persons, maybe we want to look into some things and maybe we want to do some study. And then we want to come back and we want to decide what we're going to do. So those often will turn into the creations of committees. And committees are Brown Act bodies and they require Brown Act noticing, which we will get to in a second, and they have Brown Act meetings unless they are made up of a minority of the commission, so less than a majority. So let's say you have a five-member commission. You have no more than two people who are members of that commission that are on that committee. It is advisory only. That committee is going to maybe do some study and advise the commission. Come back at a later meeting and advise the commission. Okay? So they have to be less than a majority. They have to be advisory. They would advise the commission. And the other important aspects in order for that committee not to be subject to the Brown Act is that they cannot have a standing subject matter authority. Like, for instance, let's say a budget committee. A budget committee is going to be considering and reviewing the budget, because we're always going to have a budget, on a continuing and regular basis. But let's say it's just one specific item, one specific thing, something that is going to be decided and then it will go away forever. Well, that would be a temporary item. So that would be an item that would not have a regular longstanding continuing authority. So it would only be that temporary item that you're going to be studying, bringing back advice to the commission and then it will go away. It would only be that type of an item. And then this final element in order for it to be a non-Brown Act body is that it has to, you cannot have a regular meeting schedule established by the council or by the commission that created the committee, by ordinance, by any formal action whatsoever. So it's just called an ad hoc committee up here, an ad hoc or an advisory committee. And that is the only type of committee, if it meets all those four requirements, that will not be subject to the Brown Act. Otherwise, any committee that you could create, even if it were two members, less than a majority of the commission, and you were to add a member of the public, you were to add someone who also wanted to be on that committee, it would become a Brown Act body and it would be subject to the Brown Act. So that was one thing I wanted to emphasize.
I just wanted to go back to the quorum question. If the commissioner committee does not have a quorum due to the resignation of our commission members, then they can't meet until replacements are placed upon that body by the council.
No, actually, we just had this, we had this conversation when we had some of the changes that were made just over this last year. It's not the number, it's not, okay, this is a seven-member commission, so we always have to have four, no matter what. If you only have six sitting members, well, six isn't a good number. If you only have five sitting members, even though you're, you have two vacancies, three is now your quorum. It's the quorum of the number of seated.
Oh, so someone resigns, deceased, whatever, then the quorum is now reduced by one?
Right. Now, if it's, unless you have a six members, then you're still at four. So one of the things when John was talking about the committees, there, you, those of you who have been on the CSCC are going to see some changes because you actually have two committees that you have appointed. And one of them, they're not, you know, have a, you know, you're only a member two, there's only two people, but it is a standing committee. You don't have regularly set meetings, but it, because it's for a standing subject matter, it is a Brown Act. So you will be seeing some changes if you've been on that committee or that commission, you will be seeing some changes to that.
Just one question, how do alternates get in?
Well, when alternates are, like earlier, when someone, you're under the same requirements as everyone else as far as the Brown Act. If you, if someone leaves, we had someone mentioned up here that if someone recuses themselves and you lose your quorum, that's when the alternate is brought in. Or if there is someone who is absent, then the alternate is asked to step in. As soon as that, say it's an item that your commission member has, your commissioner has recused themselves on, as soon as that item's through with the consideration, the alternate would have stepped in and been part of that. As soon as that's over and the commissioner's back, the alternate is now not voting any longer. But that being said, anytime that item comes back before, the alternate is going to maintain that spot.
So if the alternate attends, happens to be there, you have to buy and then you have sit?
The alternate is actually asked to attend at all times.
So is the quorum fly or is the quorum out?
The alternate does not count towards the quorum until they become part of the voting body. So while they're there, they're part of the quorum if you need them to make your quorum or if they're acting. Does that make sense? Okay.
Okay, next slide. Yeah, let's move forward. So what is a meeting? So, you know, again, we talked about the buzz terms for the Brown Act, a publicly noticed meeting. So the meeting, a meeting does have a specific legal definition under the Brown Act, but you saw Mr. Brown and there probably was not email when Mr. Brown, 1950, I went, Mr. Brown was doing that.
I didn't have anything to do with this Brown.
Not this Mr. Brown. So that definition of a meeting still pertains, but obviously we have had to broaden what a meeting is now. So specifically under the Brown Act, a meeting occurs when a majority of the members of the, of the commission are together at the same time, same location, to hear, discuss, deliberate, take any action that is within the subject matter jurisdiction, which means something that they have authority over of that commission. However, what a meeting can also imply is communication. And we're going to get to that in the next slide, but here, if you look at the two bottom boxes, emails, letters, telecommunications can qualify as a meeting. Even Facebook likes and other comments can qualify as a meeting. So now that we've had the technological advances we have, where people can express their opinion, commissioners and others as well, people can express their opinion through emails. People can express their opinion through Facebook and give what they believe on any given item that could be on a meeting agenda or not be on a meeting agenda, but be within their authority. Now we have to look at all of those communications and see if those communications are going to other commissioners and if by having those communications, we are actually forming a meeting. So the next slide goes to probably the most difficult area under the Brown Act, I think, is serial meetings. And so the Brown Act can be a real exercise in frustration, quite frankly. And serial meetings are the concept that I was just describing. Serial meetings occur when a majority of the members have communicated about an issue and have developed a collective concurrence, which is the language straight out of the Brown Act. So with the advent of technological devices and email and such, the AG's office has come out with an opinion over the years. And that opinion says that the Brown Act means that you are to deliberate in public, not on your computers, not through email, not through telephones with other commissioners. Those deliberations, those discussions we were talking about earlier, that is to be at a publicly noticed meeting.
No texts here.
No texts. So no collective discussions. That all has to be in a publicly noticed meeting. Not even, and this is very broad, the collective acquisition or exchange of facts. So even, well, you know, one commissioner is, says, well, I found out this and says that to another commissioner and the other commissioner says, well, and I've learned this. That's an acquisition of facts. That's an exchange of information. And even that is what the AG's office said is, should be done in a publicly noticed meeting. So you can see how emails can be such a, such a vulnerable area for violations of the Brown Act and particularly reply all. Reply all is, it's always our, you know, advice. No reply all, because the minute you do a reply all with your, with your fellow commissioners, you now have an absolute, you have a majority. And you have had one original email message and you have had a reply from a commissioner and you have had all the commissioners. You have had a majority of the commissioners seen that. And that under the Brown Act is considered a serial meeting.
Just to clarify that it's a majority though, because you saw Katie Sue at Plaza and you happened to be on the commission together. You could talk, if you're not a majority.
But be careful because one of you, you know, what Benjamin Franklin always said, you know, let's see. Three can keep a secret if two are dead. It's the same kind of situation here. If one of you who was in that discussion then talks with another commissioner, and let's say it's a five-member body, for instance, talks with another commissioner, you've just had a serial meeting. If you then discuss with that other commissioner because you've already had the collective acquisition, you've already had the exchange, you've already had the communication between the two of you, and now one of you speaks with another commissioner, if that's a majority, now that's, that's a violation of the Brown Act most likely.
If you don't hear a say, you Brown acted with not other commissioners, if you're having a conversation.
Yes, and just to clarify, so you, you can, if, you can work with, let's say I want to work with Chris and I believe there's a policy coming forward to the CSCC and he and I think alike on this. So I'm going to Brown Act with Chris. That means he and I are going to debate this conversation. We're going to think about what we want to say. We're going to think about what we're going to talk about on the dais. We can go have a conversation, but if we can't go talk with anyone else because then you start to move forward and break that, the boundaries of the Brown Act. So you can have a conversation with another person. You can Brown Act with that person, but then if, you know, if Deb walked up to Chris and say, hey, Chris, can we talk about, you know, X? Because I really, you know, I think we think the, I think we think the same and I'd like to talk to you about it. Chris needs to say, I'm sorry, Deb, I'm already Brown acting with someone else. I can't talk to you about that. All right? So you control that by making sure that you are putting some parameters on. Now, I'll be frank, there are some of commissions like CFAC, it's difficult frankly with some of like doing the treasure artists and doing some of the things you do. It's hard because you're organizing events and that kind of thing. And so that's where you really need to work with Rebecca, but there's part of, especially the CFAC that I think is a little more awkward. So then you may need to create an ad hoc committee that's going to do something on something. And then that committee can go do some work. But that, there's, those are some of the workarounds, but those are legal workarounds, not illegal workarounds.
Yeah, and I'd just say also when that ad hoc committee is doing its work, that ad hoc committee can't be communicating, let's say it's a five-person body, again, to make it simple, can't be communicating with another commissioner.
How, and like how, like do we have to Brown Act, like talk about the weather? Like is it like, is that related?
It's within your authority. Yeah. Area, an area within your authority.
Like we're talking, say about trying to climate something and that has to be something else in the future. Is it really specific to just items on the agenda or?
You have to be careful. You got to know if there's something else that's going to come forward in that commission, that's going to come forward nine months from now, you can't be discussing it. I think there's also managing perception. So in another agency, I had a, it wasn't a commission, but I had a board. And that board, they were subject because they took, they had public money. They helped manage an entity and they had public money. So they were subject to the Brown Act. Well, that group would go have coffee. And five of them, the five-member board would go have coffee and they'd go have breakfast and they were basically having side meetings. Now, maybe they weren't talking about business. I kind of doubt it. But the reality is they, the other people saw them do that and it caused a whole storm. And because there was a perception that they were meeting outside of those public meetings. So if three of you on a commission are going having coffee somewhere, just beware that, you know, people, again, you are now a commissioner. And so if everyone knows that three of you on a commission, you're having coffee at Pete's, you know, it can be perceived you're having a side meeting, even if you aren't. So you also, there's the reality and then there's managing the perception. Because you just want to, you know, you want your own ethics to be clean and clear. Yes, George?
If somebody perceives you to be having a meeting, when having, is there a watchdog group? Is it off somebody's attention?
Whose attention is it brought to?
So it tends to be brought to the city clerk or a council member or staff. And, you know, sometimes, and then sometimes it's a side conversation. We'll pull a commissioner aside, you know, we'll have a conversation, you know, say, hey, it was reported this, you know, this occurred and the person said, no, we were talking about X. And it's like, okay, you just need to be careful, you know, and maybe it wasn't. Or if there's actual proof, if we need to go clean it up, then we'll go, you know, we'll try to clean it up. But again, it's just, it's a, you're doing the public's business. And so you want to make sure that you are doing it within the letter of the law. And if you have questions, because it's stumbly, you know, call staff and we'll be happy to help you through. Yeah, George?
I have another question about the quorum. Let's say with the city council, if one of the city council people have to recuse themselves and then they, the vote happens and it's two and two, what happens?
Well, it depends on the item, the question included. Normally, without a majority of the motion, like motion counts.
Okay.
Yeah, there are, yeah, there are no alternates. There are, there's a, there's some, there's some details and there are some things that are a little different based on some circumstances, but generally it's a two to the dais. But you, there are some unique circumstances with some land use things. It can be where someone can refuse himself and then you could draw a lottery and then one of those person people have to come back and they get to participate. But that is a rare thing and that's, I haven't seen it in 25 years.
What happens if the public's people feel that a city council person should recruit themselves, but they don't?
It's a council member's own decision as to whether or not, it's the council member's own decision as to whether or not to recuse him or herself.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it is, it is an individual decision, but and, but if you make that decision, if you think, and we'll talk about conflict of interest in a little bit, if you think you have- you have.
We can't give advice. We can say, "Hey, you may want to, you're within 500 feet, you may not want to participate, you may want to get advice from the FPPC. If you want help writing something, we'll help write something," you know, so we'll help folks through that. But the individual makes the decision, because the individual owns consequences. If someone then files a complaint with the FPPC, you are being penalized. You can get fined, you can get a misdemeanor, so it is, you, it is a risk, it's a bit of a risk assessment, it's also an ethical decision. So it is an individual choice on what, what someone does.
We're not really after the, have our conflict time, because it's pretty much?
Yeah, for, it's really design review, that really, the rest of you, there really isn't that kind of conflict, because you're all advisory. Design review is some of that quasi-judicial, last is planning commission, obviously council, which is a little different than, you know, we do have those conversations. Okay, let's keep going.
Okay, so the, the slide is really about serial meetings, and just kind of describes the, the chain, I think we've, I think we've talked about, so. The next one really is a pictorial kind of explanation of a hub-and-spoke meeting. There are these various different terms, but basically what it means is, you have one who is talking to three individually, separately, and then you have the one saying to another, "Well, I've talked with three, and they don't like it." So.
Mikey doesn't like it.
Mikey doesn't like, yeah, there you go. So what you have conveyed there is all, you've had all the exchange, apparently that, that makes the majority in this, in this slide. So you've had the exchange, it's all gone on, and you have somebody basically telling another person as to what the positions are of the other three, so, I mean, that's, that's the type of serial meeting problem that you.
One thing about that, too.
One thing that people don't realize sometimes with the hub-and-spoke meeting is, say, you know, Kate, you call me and say, "Oh, I want to do this," and then Linda, you call me and say this, and then Veronica, is it Veronica? Thank you, calls me and says, "Oh, I want to do this." I'm a staff person, so it's like, oh, she's not on the commission. But if I turn around and tell someone else that's on the commission, it's a meeting. It doesn't have to be in between the commissioners. Does that make sense?
So this is, this is a training point for staff. So for staff, you don't, you may know what individual commissioners are thinking, but you are not sharing that information, because otherwise, you have become the conduit to having a serial meeting. So a lot of times, we may know what some, maybe all commissioners are thinking, we are not sharing that information. I mean, we get asked, well, what's someone's, you know, what's, what's the, I mean, I get asked sometimes, "What is the council going to do about this?" You'll know when I know, you'll know when it's on the public dais, and when they make that decision, that decision. But it's not a staff, it's very important that we maintain that integrity, that we are not being a conduit of information and creating any Brown Act violation.
Okay, so the next slide is really, I think, just kind of an overview, that there are such things as closed sessions under the Brown Act, and they are only for very specialized circumstances, and only for certain bodies that would have to make such decisions. It could be collective bargaining, it could be litigation decisions. It is rare, I think, that any of your commissions would have to go into closed session. I haven't seen it, and I've been doing this 20 years. Council does go into closed session, it's considered an exception to the Brown Act. What closed session means is that it is not open to the public. And basically, it is to protect the agency, let's say the agency's in litigation with another party, that agency should be protected in its discussions and its deliberations with its attorney, otherwise the other party would know everything that that agency is thinking, and that would not be fair. So there are closed sessions, but you will not very likely ever have to be concerned about them. So we'll move on. Notices, notice of meeting, going back to a publicly noticed meeting, that's the Brown Act. So notices handled by Rebecca and, and staff liaisons for the commissions? Yes, okay. So you don't have to worry about putting together notices. Basically, the rule is, for a regular meeting, a meeting that is regularly scheduled, which probably most of yours will be, the notice has to go out 72 hours in advance, it has to be at a place where the public has access to it, so that the public has enough notice to, warning essentially, that there may be an item on the agenda that your commission will be discussing or considering, that members of the public might want to have input at, or, or make comments about, and come to the meeting and do so. A special meeting is a meeting that is not regularly scheduled, but there is a reason why the meeting has to go on before the next regularly scheduled meeting, and that only requires a notice of 24 hours, requires a notice, go to the media. I think it can be called either by the chair or by a majority.
Special?
Yeah.
This is called by the chair?
The chair.
And it is posted on the, at the, say, on the website, because we have a single consent, we're required to do all those postings on our website, so.
So when she's saying called by the chair, would that mean, that's kind of a legal term in terms of how that happens. If there is a need for a special meeting, that is a conversation with staff, obviously. There's got to be, there's got to be a reason to have it, and it's not the chair can just say, "We're going to do a special meeting." So I just, but legally, we, you may have seen some council agendas where we'll say, "This is a special meeting called by," it used to be like we did it, numbered them with Mayor Hundley. And that's a legal term, that the chair has to kind of call it in that way. So I just want to create a little clarification on that. Deb?
And 72 hours, should we assume that should be business hours, if you wouldn't post a meeting on Friday or Monday?
We do, Friday from Monday, sometimes that's what happens, yeah, that includes weekends, so it is 72 full hours. And again, that, legally, we're, let Rebecca talk, where legally, we post on the bulletin board, and then the, also, obviously, the website. So that's where we're legally required to post. And we also, you know, we can't, we have to post it and provide it to you, the commissioners, we can't give it to you ahead of when it's publicly posted.
So the next slide, please. So this just is really about the content of the, the agenda, the, the agenda which goes out 72 hours, that's the, that's the notice for a regular meeting. The agenda has a brief general description of the item that is to be discussed, and it will specify the time and location of the meeting, again, for the public. What's important about the agenda is, only items that are on the agenda can be the subject of discussion or action. And there are very few exceptions, although they commonly occur. All of those begin with brief, brief responses, brief questions, brief references to staff, maybe a member of the public comes up and says, maybe it's the traffic safety committee, for instance, "People are speeding like demons on my street, and we need a stop sign." Maybe that's a good opportunity to give a reference to staff, and that, that member of the public can speak with staff about that. Maybe it would be something that the commission might want to take up later, and would direct staff to place a matter on a future agenda. Or have staff look into the matter and then report back to the commission. But those are really, or a brief report on one's activities, if the commissions do that, those are really the only exceptions.
So one thing that we are going to be working on, we've already kind of changed some of this with the CSEC recently, and we're going to be working with each of the commissions. One, we want to try to standardize what our agendas look like, so if the public looks at a commission agenda, like, they, you know, there's a look and feel, they'll look the same. Also, making sure that it's clear when you're just discussing something and when you're going to take action, because the public needs to know if you're going to take action, or if this just is a discussion. And so none of our agendas have been clear enough on that, and so that's a piece that we're going to be working with staff on, to make sure that that's really clear, because the public needs to be able to read it and go, "Am I going to come? Am I going to comment? Are they just discussing, or are they going to take action?" They need to understand that, okay? Yes, Deb?
But there is the opportunity, when it says, "Are there any items on the agenda the public wants to bring up?" So is that just the public's bringing it up, and the actual council or commissioners can't speak about it, because it's not on the agenda?
That's correct. So under public comment, anyone can come up and say, "I think you should do X," or, you know, "I believe Y," and they can talk to you about that, but you cannot re, staff can maybe provide brief responses, "Thank you, I hear there's a concern," if traffic safety, there's a form, here's how you should fill out, or, "Great idea, you may not know we already do this, we do a cultural treasure artist event, maybe you don't know that, happy to talk to you afterwards." That, it can be a brief response to politely educate the public, but we're not having a dialogue, we're not discussing it, we're not taking action.
So, let's see. Just again, participation at meetings, I think we can go to the next one. So there, the next few slides really are just various depictions of what, what can be considered not a violation, so not a meeting. In this case, it was what was brought up earlier about, can a commissioner have a conversation with a staff member, for instance, one-on-one, just the commissioner and the staff member? Yes, it's not considered a meeting. Here, you know, the advice is that it is a time for, you know, questions to be answered. It's always great if you have questions about an item that's on the agenda, to contact the staff member and ask those questions in advance. It really makes for a much more facilitated process during, during the meeting. And so that, that slide really just kind of states that that is not a meeting. So the next slide, did you just go? Okay. And so a member of a commission can also have a one-on-one communication with any other person, same, same situation. Obviously, your commissioners, and, you know, you have a, an office and a position, and there are going to be members of the public who are going to want to speak to you about things that have to do with what you do on the commission, and so the Brown Act does not consider that a meeting, that's another one-to-one communication. And then the next slide has to do with a situation that does come up quite often, and that is that a majority of the members of a commission can go to an open and publicly noticed meeting of another commission, another body such as a city council, or the planning commission, for instance. The rules always, the rule of thumb has always been, however, that the commissioners cannot discuss among themselves, and again, it is that appearance of impropriety that Kathy was talking about. If you're at a meeting, even a city council meeting, you have the commissioners all sitting together and discussing, it really looks like there is that type of meeting going on, without the deliberation being during a noticed meeting of that, of that commission. So often, the advice is, don't sit with one another just so that we don't have that appearance, and people don't accuse you of something that, you know, you're, you're not doing. So it's always kind of a good idea to, to sit apart, yes.
Why is California so careful about conflict of interest, and then the federal government seems to be completely opposite, and that it's just naked?
You want my opinion?
I mean, it just seems counterintuitive that we would try to be so careful when it's obvious everyone has interests, and they're trying to play those interests out.
California's special.
Learn by example. Yeah. So, it is, I just, it is fascinating and a little frustrating to those of us that are in local government, we have these rules and regulations, and we have to follow them. On a state level, they're, they don't have to post their agendas, they can, you know, they can post a budget at, on a Friday night at 10 o'clock, and they can approve that budget at 6:00 a.m. on a Saturday morning. That budget may not have been available to the public, may not, it's, so there's all these, there are definitely different rules for state and federal, but these are the rules that we have, been given by the state of California, and we have to follow them. I think, I think they, some of them are cumbersome, but as you get used to them, you get used to them, and the rationale and the reason is, is good, to make sure that the public's business is done in the public. So, but I appreciate the irony.
So the next slide, yeah, we have it? Okay, great. Also, you can have a majority of members of a commission at a purely ceremonial or social occasion. So the Brown Act also recognizes that.
Just don't sit together.
Just don't sit together.
Don't speak.
And, right. And then the, the next slide has to do with community meetings, and I guess the important thing here is, it's not a meeting that is actually arranged by the city, it's a meeting that is arranged by maybe a community organization. You can have, again, a majority of the commission at that meeting. Again, though, can't talk among yourselves about areas that are within your authority, areas within your subject matter jurisdiction. So obviously, if it's about a project, design review board members, majority cannot talk among themselves, and even two should not be talking among themselves at that community meeting, and again, comes down to the appearance of impropriety. So the next slide is just a little bit of tweak on the first three. Again, a majority of the members of the commission can attend, be present at a meeting of a, of a standing committee. Remember, again, we talked about committees, committees are advisory, if they're not ad hoc, meaning they have continuing authority, or they have a regular meeting schedule, then they are a standing committee. You can have a majority of commission members at that standing committee, but they can only be observers. They can't get up and speak as a member of the public, they are commissioners, it is a standing committee of their commission, they can sit back and they can observe, but that's all they can do. So the next slide is, Kathy, I talked a little bit earlier about the legal consequences for Brown Act violations, and they are stiff. The first one is a criminal violation, a misdemeanor. So a misdemeanor is defined as something that can end in, in imprisonment. So that's something you don't want to do. And in addition to being a misdemeanor, we'll move on, in addition to being a misdemeanor, it also, a Brown Act violation can also lead to a civil lawsuit against the city. So obviously lawsuits are expensive, a violation is found, you need to know, the court can require the city to pay the other side's attorney's fees and court costs for bringing that case. And also, of course, the court can nullify the action that was taken at that meeting, yes?
So who is the, who is the, what is the body that is prosecuting or otherwise, like this, this time you say, "I think that was a Brown Act violation," and so who investigates that, who actually brings the lawsuit?
Okay, so if it is a criminal case, then it's going to be brought by a district attorney or prosecutor. If it is a civil case, then it can be brought, I think, by basically any member of the public as a civil, as a civil lawsuit on behalf of the public, and, and it happens, it does happen.
So they would have to complain?
So they would have to file a loss, they would have to actually file a lawsuit if they were to do that. Now, if a prosecutor were to bring a mis, an action, then that would be a criminal case, and that, any citizen cannot do that.
So I had a situation in another city where the council had a conversation about whether to agendize something. That conversation, it wasn't agendized, went on for about 25, 26 minutes, I think, maybe half an hour. And they agreed to agendize, I think, and create a subcommittee to do that. We believe that it was, it was legal within the Brown Act. The individuals on the other side, who didn't believe that that should occur, basically filed, sent a city a letter called a cease and desist, and they basically said, "We, we think the council violated the Brown Act, you have to cease and desist that," and they lay out what they want you to cease and desist or fix. And then basically, I think, John, you've got 30 days, I think, something like that, you've got a certain timeframe for the city to then respond. You can either say, "Yes, we did make a mistake, and here's how we're going to cure it," or you say, "No, we believe we are fully within the Brown Act, the action taken was legal," and you then tell, you then state that. And then what occurs is, then the individual. And then, what occurs is then the individual who filed the cease and desist can sue the city. So, but you do have an opportunity. They have to first do the cease and desist, and you have an opportunity to cure it, to fix it, because sometimes there are mistakes that are made, and you just-- if you fix it, then the public agency can't get sued. But if you choose not to fix it because you don't think you did anything wrong, then you are subject to a lawsuit, and if you lose, you pay not only your own attorney fees, but you pay the attorney fees for the other clients as well.
And then, in that case also, the cure that was requested was that that never be allowed again on any meeting agenda, and that was pretty impossible in order to cure that. They would never be able to speak again about putting something on the agenda. So, yeah, it gets tricky, you know. It's an area of litigation like any other area of litigation. I'm sure you all had experience there, and, you know, it's just the way it works. So, the other consequences are, obviously, you can have a breakdown in community relations due to mistrust and the perception of secrecy. It obviously is something that members of the public would think, you know, "What are you hiding? Why are you doing this in secret?" Something you want to stay away from. Damage to the reputation of the city, you know, generally, these get reported, so they become known, and so, obviously, that hurts the city's reputation. And then, of course, a lack of confidence in the democratic process, which we all-- or some of us seem to have in the federal process. We don't want to have that in the city process. So, test your knowledge. So, here should be a pretty easy one. At a council meeting, Councilmember Brown asks the staff-- we didn't do this on purpose-- asks the staff for an explanation.
I won't take offense. Councilmember Jones.
Yeah. Councilmember A asks the staff for an explanation of the city's process for approving and updating the city zoning map. The presentation never mentioned on the council's agenda for the meeting, big hint, led to a 26-minute-long discussion. Is this a Brown Act violation?
Yes.
All you pros, yes, 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 of course it is. Why? Not on the council's agenda. So, we go to the next one. The next one, "A majority of the city of Utopia," great place, "planning commission members discuss and debate amongst each other a specific item of public business through the use of emails and telephone calls." All you pros out there. Is this a Brown Act violation?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So, move on to the Public Records Act.
Kathy, a question?
Are we close to my bedtime?
We are close.
Yes.
I would say we're lessons in this.
Thank you.
And our normal.
Talk about whatever you want.
Oh.
Okay.
The staff, we can talk, yes. Yeah, we can deliberate, and we can talk. So, just elected at the shores and appointed from the shores of the Brown Act. But we have to-- we are supposed to be sure that we don't break it. We can't do that serial piece.
Right.
I guess probably started with last thing. So, just a quick question. Is there a procedural reason to abstain? Or you can't just abstain because we don't want it, right? Don't they have to have a real reason to do an abstain?
Not really. I mean, honestly, you can abstain. You don't have to-- I mean, if there's refusing yourself and leading a diaspora conflict, but you can abstain. I guess it's not something we encourage. You're there to express your opinion and to vote and stand. It's not always easy. It's not. But you sign up the opposition or you give your voice. And so, if it's hot in the room and you want to abstain, I would encourage you to find your own person and make the decision about what you can put your voices.
The traffic safety is a committee. Look, we have-- there's all the thinking on that estimation, which is a subcommittee. It's a-- I guess if it's not, it would be a small committee, that's my question. And it's comprised of six staff. And then, we have the traffic safety committee, which I am a member of, and we have four of us. We're only brought good when there are appeals of what the city's subcommittee does.
Right.
And so, as I'm listening to all this, I'm having trouble tracking or putting this structure into place regarding what you guys have just discussed. Maybe it's just you have--
We're confused based on that there's a staff committee that provides professional recommendation. So, there are-- is that the confusion, Amanda?
Well, maybe I'm confused because of all the traffic safety subcommittees.
Okay, so, could you enlighten me, pleasure? But there are definitely-- like, there are actions that Colleen, that's the public director and city engineer, there are decisions that she makes that are subject-- that can be appealed. So, similar here, we set up one person with an authority to make an administrative decision. There's a group of staff that come together, police chief, public director, there's a group that comes together, and they make a decision. It's an administrative decision, and if it's not appealed, it stands. But if it's appealed, then it goes to all of you. So, it is-- so, that's kind of the check and balance of an internal of some staff administering the processes, decisions of which there are. Does that help a little?
Yeah, it does. I guess I'm not sure if we're-- I guess, you know, again, maybe it's just that it's a standing-- not a standing, but a subcommittee.
Yeah. Staff. So, I think it's a really good question, and maybe we can talk. We can look at some language as we do some cleanup of the traffic committee to think if there's some different nomenclature we can use on the staff committee to not create confusion with the Brown Act. So, I think that's a piece. Maybe Colleen's hearing us. Or Colleen's are hearing. Maybe you guys can talk a little more about that. Staff, our staff, we can talk offline and see if we can try to reduce any confusion.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next we're going to be talking about the Public Records Act. First slide. So, the Public Records Act, what's the purpose of that, and why are we all subject to it? Well, the California Constitution says that the people's business is open to the public. You have a right as the public to have access to-- it says, "The writings of public officials and agencies shall be open to public scrutiny." So, the Public Records Act is-- was put in place in response to the Constitution, to that right. So, the origin of the Public Records Act, it's actually been around for quite some time. It was enacted in 1968, and it says it was to safeguard the accountability of government to the public, promote maximum disclosure of the conduct of the governmental operations, and to explicitly acknowledge the principle that secrecy is antithetical to a democratic system. Basically, it's open. It allows transparency, and that's-- it ensures that. That's why it was put into place. Who is subject to it? All of us. You've got your state agencies, your local agencies. Some private entities are subject to it, and it's not just the city or city staff. It's any of its officers, its consultants, its appointees. So, that being said, everyone in this room is now subject to the California Public Records Act. When we were talking earlier about this transition from citizen or from not being a commissioner to being a commissioner, that's one of the things that you have done. Before, you weren't subject to that, but now, you are. So, the question possibly is, what is a public record? It's described as "any writing containing information relating to the public's business, prepared, used, retained in the course of business, regardless of physical form or characteristics." So, if you send an email to your staff liaison about something coming before the commissioner or the committee, you have now created a public record. Okay? So, just-- I'm not going to read these, but breaking it down as far as what a public record is. Any writing, that's-- I mean, that's not just something you've handwritten. It's an email. It's a photocopy that you've given to someone. You know, it's email. Text is a public record. Social media is now a writing. It can be in print or in electronic form. The next one is information relating to the conduct of the public's business. So, just writing something doesn't necessarily make it a public record. It has to be about the business of the city, stuff that's under your jurisdiction in order to be a public And then, prepared, owned, used, or retained by any state or local agency. Again, it doesn't pertain to documents or records that don't exist. It is the things that are actually held by the city or by you as someone who is subject to that. If someone makes a public records request, and anyone can do that. Anyone at any time can make a public records request. There's not a specific way that they have to do that. They don't have to send me-- as a city clerk, I'm the custodian of records for the city. They don't have to send me a formal letter or a formal email that says, "You know, I'm requesting this." They can be walking, you know, down the street and say, "Rebecca, I want a copy of such and such." They also don't have to make it to me. They can make it to one of the other staff members. So, the thing is, though, is if they ask for something that doesn't exist, we're not required-- the Public Records Act doesn't require us to create a record for them. So, which-- you laugh, but it's-- I get that quite often. People saying, "Well, I want all of this information, so I want you to create this record for me."
If that request is made to a municipal commissioner, then they come to you and say, "Is the request to be made because I imagine you would keep her?"
Yeah, and they would-- and if that were to happen, I would really strongly suggest that you tell them, you know, you need to make that-- we strongly encourage them to make it to the proper person, because, as we'll talk about, there is a timeline that the city is required, and that doesn't necessarily start until it gets to the person who is actually the right person. So, any questions on that? I'm sorry, I'm going to go.
Another question. Are there instances where somebody asked for a record that should have been kept? What lesson?
Very-- yeah, they're definitely-- that has definitely happened, that we have a city retention guideline, retention schedule, that says it discusses all the different type of documents that we-- records that we create, and there are some of the retention of how long we have to keep them. Some of them are permanent. Some of them are, you know, depends on what the item is as to what the retention is.
I'm more asking, not retention, but looking at someone to say, "The agency or the city should have made a record of..."
Yeah. No, they--
I read something somewhere, yeah, that was a letter.
Yeah, it's-- I mean, you-- You definitely have times when people think it should have been made a record, or-- but we have very, you know, very explicit guidelines that we have to follow as far as records. So, if it was something-- we're not-- again, we're not required to create a record for something that doesn't.
You know, I think somebody, you know, just a-- so, you know, I probably get 200 or 250 emails a day sometimes. And so, of those, how many of those are records? A lot of them are quick check-ins. I'm going through. If it's not something that I consider material that I need to retain, I am-- emails are transitory. You know, they are not permanent. A great majority of emails are not permanent records, and so, they get deleted. But if there's an email that comes in that I think is material to a project I'm working on, then that email gets there. And then, but if you go through a project, that email may be-- it may be material while you're putting a draft together, but once you've got a draft and it's been approved by a commissioner or council, it is no longer material, because now, everything's been incorporated within the document. None of those emails can be deleted. So, the piece here, though, is while particularly emails and texts, and in this staff, there are-- we have made a determination of what is transitory. Again, we have a very detailed of how long we have to keep certain types of records and that based on state law and the council policy. But then, there's also the question-- so, we keep-- but then, there's also the records of what records can, you know, be eliminated. So, the piece that's happening more and more in cities is that a member of the public will ask for, you know, there's a development project, and they want-- they want copies of city staff emails, city staff texts, council texts, council emails, commission texts, commission emails. And Rebecca will talk about this. It doesn't matter if you eat free in your Gmail account to talk to people about city business on design review, or if you're-- because there isn't a-- you don't have a city account, right? Doesn't matter what tool you're using. You're doing the city's business, and Rebecca will contact you and say, "I need any email correspondence that you've had on project X, and you need to provide that to us." So, it's definitely, you know, emails are bad in this field. But email also, you know, sometimes the right things you wish you hadn't written. So, you just need to be careful about what you write, too. And sometimes, better not have a conversation with someone than writing, and sometimes you just don't want to say anything. So--
And that goes directly into this next slide, the city of San Jose versus the Superior Court of Santa Clara County. And this is something-- I find this interesting, because this isn't something really new that your private devices or your private emails were subject to this, but this case really clarified and hit home that the-- what's the word I'm looking for? The seriousness of this and that this is, you know, now, there's case law that says this is the case. As Kathy said, if you send a record, if you send a email on your, you know, your personal email account about something having to do with an item, the city-related, city business related, that's going to come to your-- into your jurisdiction, that's a disclosable record and is now subject to the CPRA regardless of whether it's on your personal cellphone or a city cellphone or a personal email account. And so, if, again, I get that request, I'll be contacting you, saying, "I need you to look at your records and tell me if you have anything that is subject to this." One of the things that this case did do was that there is a-- basically, it's like an affidavit. Is that the right word, John? That you will have to sign that says, "I have searched my records, and I have no disclosable documents." And there is one thing that if it talks about-- it has to contain the public's business. It may be something that's personal, strictly personal. That wouldn't be disclosed. The case talked about the one person saying that my fellow employee is an idiot. That, you know, that's a personal-- it's not something-- even though it was talking about a fellow employee, it's not a disclosable document. And but there will be times that you'll be asked to, if it has something to do with like item that you may think isn't necessarily, you may be asked to produce it, and then city staff will make the call whether it is disclosable or not.
So, I think there is-- there's two things. There's this thought that of what's a public record, and then, there's a question of what's disclosable. Okay? A lot of times, if you're having a conversation with staff, that's all going to be disclosed because-- and yet, if I'm having a conversation with Rebecca on something related, maybe to this, to the cultural and fine arts, because we're staff, it's-- there is an exemption called a deliberative process. We're using email to have a deliberative process and conversation, and if every email that I did with staff while we're trying to work out policy or having this deliberate conversation was put out while we're figuring out drafts, and then, it causes confusion in the public, right? Because we may start here, talk about it, move here, and end here. Well, if all of that was disclosable, one, it would really limit our ability to be effective, and that whole process would not be necessarily helpful to the public interest. It causes more confusion than it helps. So, there is an exemption for, like, John and I can have conversations, and those records aren't disclosed because they're attorney-client privilege. I can have conversations with Rebecca on some of those things, and those are deliberative process. And then, there's some-- there's some pieces that John is going to look at emails and say, "You know, this one is different. These records are going to have to be disclosed." So, we're going through that, and we-- and in today's world, I would just tell you, it doesn't matter. It's like the last three cities I've worked for, the number of public records acts are just kind of increasing. It's a tool. And, you know, the public has a right to it, but it does take a huge amount of staff, huge, to-- huge, to follow through. If you're in one of these and you have to go search through all of your hundreds and thousands of emails to companies, it's a burden on you as well. So, it is, it is what it is and we, I just want you all to be aware of it. I'm not sure it's really going to affect the commissions in this room. It definitely will and can affect planning commission and it definitely affects council. But again, you just need to know that your voice and those emails are part of a public record and just be cautious and it doesn't matter what tool you're using to do it on.
So, do we have a responsibility to retain these, we have this, we have this discussion about public, public issue? Do we have a retention requirement?
Yeah, so, we're actually, this is a system, we're actually going to work on a little bit. So, you may want to speak about this. We may be creating some emails, like an email just for the cultural and fine arts and an email just for the traffic committee. So, if members of the public want to email the commission, it comes to a city generic email, we then forward it to you. But that way, we as an agency have the record. But if a member of the public is sending, sends something to all of their individual emails, which again, we're not going to be putting your individual emails on the website, I think that has been done in some other agencies, we're going to have this, we're going to have a portal basically where it's going to flow through a generic city email so that we can track those and hopefully reduce the impact of having you all have to go through your personal emails. But if you do get a record from a member of the public and you're in the design review and they've sent something and you think, you know, this is probably something that should be sent to the rest of the commission, or maybe it was sent to a couple of you as commissioners, maybe not all of you, then you should forward that to the staff liaison and that should be part of the package. That make sense? So, a little bit, I think we're going to, we're refining how we do our business to try to make it, you know, kind of just within rules and make it easier for both staff and all of you.
I don't know if this is related that much, but I was on the city's website the other day and our names and all the commissions run out out there.
So, they let, commission information lives on the civic blog portal.
Yeah, but I couldn't find a list of who I want to do it.
It's on, under meetings and we're going to be changing the nomenclature on that because we found that if you go in and you were getting your...
Maybe I did it under meetings.
Meeting type, yeah.
But, so, all of our names were listed, but not our full names there.
Correct, and that's what's...
So, if we need to contact another, another commissioner or member of our own commission, we email out the staff and then they, they, they share the information as they, as they can.
But I think the better way is just, we really need to...
Come to the city.
Yeah, so that we're not doing individuals and just try to make it less messy and make it easier for the public if they're not having to send an email, again, that comes into, and then we'll distribute, comes into a portal and we'll distribute it all out to you. And that way, we make sure that you all get the information and you all have the blocks.
So, I, I just wanted to add that just like the Brown Act, a violation of the Public Records Act can be the subject of a lawsuit. And the law is very clear that the rule is disclosure. If it is a record that comes within the category of information, the description in the request, the rule is disclosure. And then it is our job, the city's job, city's burden is what it's called under the law, to establish that it comes within any of the specific and narrow exceptions that are allowed under the Public Records Act. And if we can't establish that, then again, you have a party that is suing the city, the party wins and then we're subject to their attorney's fees. So, it is very serious. It works like the Brown Act in that it can be the subject of litigation and again, the burden's on the city. Again, the rule is disclosure.
Okay, so quickly, we'll go through these last couple of slides. I'm not going to go through all of them, but there are, as I talked about, those exemptions to the CPRA of what's disclosable. There are some that are mandatory prohibitions against disclosure, peace officer personnel files, medical, mental health files, welfare records, juvenile court records. These are, only can be disclosed under court order. And then there are some that are, if you want to go to the next slide, John, I'm just going to go through these really quickly. These are some other exemptions. These can be disclosed with redaction of certain information. I mean, you see preliminary drafts, confidential information, deliberative process, endangerment to someone if disclosed. We talked a little bit about deliberative process. Not everything you think would qualify as deliberative process qualifies, so it may be disclosed. One of the things that's really important, we can go to the next slide, unless there's questions on exemptions, that's something that the city really, we really control and look at. As far as the timing of response, the PRA is very explicit of the time that I have to respond to someone who's made a public records request. The initial response has to be done with, to them in 10 days. It's not 10 business days, it's 10 calendar days. Sometimes it gets tricky. And a lot of people think that the CPRA requires that 10 days for the documents to be given to them. That's not actually accurate. We try and do our best to get it to them, we, you know, if we can, if it's something easy, we'll just send it right away. There are times when you, you know, it's going to take a lot of like research and looking. So, we just have to say within that 10 days whether, we have to do an initial response, you know, whether we have records that are disclosable or that are responsive. Sometimes in certain circumstances, if you haven't had time to search, you can in certain instances extend that response time for another 14 days. But you have to let them know within that 10 days that you're going to be extending the time. That being said, someone comes in, it is our responsibility in my office and our offices to help them with, you know, if they're not sure what they're looking for, we really try and help them narrow it. So, anything else? And in your commission handbook, you'll be getting books, some booklets from the lead of California cities. One's entitled, on the Brown Act, entitled, "Open in Public." And then one is the People's Business, which is a booklet about the Public Records Act. Very, very easy to follow. They're like, you know, they're in, I don't want to say layman's terms, but they're, you know, use that type of, you know, some tips, examples and that, but you'll be getting those in your commission handbook. Yeah, so...
So, I mean, I mean, do you get a bunch or...
Right now, I'm spending probably, what, 60% of my time answering them. And, you know, it's, it's, it's interesting because it doesn't just have to be someone who has a specific reason they want this, you know, they have a project and they want this. People can come, vendors, I've had individuals from New York that send me public records requests for uncashed checks of the city because they're going to go after those individuals and make money. So, I mean, it's, it's very, and then you have individuals who are just, you know, they are looking for something that never existed, but they're sure it did. I had, in one of my previous cities, I had someone who came in and said, "I want every document that talked about water." And I'm like, "Yeah." And I'm like, "So, what exactly are you looking for?" And what it was is he was, finally, he finally, after months, he finally, we got him to tell us that there was some percentage of a fee, he was part of a big development, he lived a homeowner, and he thought that there was some fee that was on water. It never had been done, but that's what he was looking for. And so, it was like, I mean, sometimes they go on for months and months and months.
So, I think, are there any other questions? It's been a little longer than we wanted. This was not, you know, this was what I really wanted to say thank you to each of you for coming, for giving the choices, for having a great dialogue, and thank you for your service to you in our town. You know, there may be other questions that come up and we can do other trainings and even work with your staff. So, thank you very much and really, thank you for having me.